Good morning and welcome to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. At this time, we ask if you could please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. My name is Marjorie Velazquez, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. And welcome to our committee hearing on the use of facial recognition technology in New York City businesses in the proposed intro number 8A related to the disclosure of total ticket costs and advertisements for entertainment events in New York City. I'd like to acknowledge my colleagues here on the committee. I have Councilmember Shawna Brayu, I have Councilwoman Julie Wong, I have Councilmember Chi Ose who are on Zoom, and I have Public Advocate Jumani Williams. So, New York City is one of the world's preeminent centers for live entertainment and events. We are the home of Broadway, iconic sport franchises, Yankees. Yeah, gotta give them love. Sorry, Mets, and renowned venues, large and small. As the Chair of Consumer Worker Protection Committee, it is of the utmost importance that me and that New Yorkers receive honest, transparent, and fair treatment from event venues and other commercial establishments. All too often, however, when consumers go online to buy tickets to events, they are surprised by fees that increase the cost by as much as 20%. The bill that we are hearing today, which is sponsored by Councilmember Brennan, would help address these surprise costs by requiring event operators and ticket sellers to include the entire cost of the ticket, including taxes and fees, especially in their advertisements. This disclosure would help consumers understand the full cost of a ticket price upfront, rather than being surprised later. The other topic we are here to address is the use of facial recognition technology in New York City businesses. Once, the realm of science fiction, technological advances in recent years have made facial recognition technology affordable and effective for a wide range of commercial uses. While facial recognition technology has the potential to be used in a positive way that would help improve safety and efficiency in businesses, it also poses new consumer protection challenges. In response to the growing use of this technology and concerns about New Yorkers' privacy and consent, in 2021, the council passed legislation that requires New York City businesses to inform customers if facial recognition technology is in use. And it also prohibits businesses from selling any facial recognition data that they collect. Despite significant improvements in recent years, facial recognition remains an imperfect technology that misidentifies people of color, women, and young people. Even very small error rates can impact large numbers of other members of people in the city as large as ours, and misidentification can have significant consequences on those affected. Facial recognition relies on large stores of valuable personal data, making the systems a potential target of security breaches, information leaks by careless or corrupt employees, or even foreign intelligence agency break-ins. Companies that develop facial recognition software sometimes use deceptive tactics to expand their databases or improve their products. And as more entities gain access to facial recognition technology, it increases the potential for improper use. Like many people, I am extremely concerned about the reports that MSG is using facial recognition to enforce a ban on lawyers who work at firms involved in litigation with the company. According to the New York State Attorney General, as many as 90 firms and thousands of lawyers are affected by this ban, regardless of whether the attorneys have any relationship to the litigation against the company. As a result of the policy, multiple ticket-holding patrons have been denied entry to sporting events, concerts, and performances at Madison Square Garden-owned properties. One of the people impacted was attorney Kelly Conlon, who was denied entry to the Radio City Music Hall while chaperoning her daughter's Girl Scout troop to a Rocket Show. Facial recognition identified Conlon as she went through the metal detectors and security guards forced her to wait outside while her daughter and the other members of the Girl Scout troop and their mothers got to enjoy the performance. Conlon's law firm is involved with a personal injury case against a venue owned by Madison Square Garden, but she has nothing to do with the case and doesn't even practice law in New York. While we certainly do not want to stand in the way of technological advancements, we must do what we can as a city to protect New Yorkers' privacy and information and ensure that these products are not used in ways that harm consumers and workers. We are here today to learn more about how New York City businesses are employing facial recognition technology, as well as the benefits and risks associated with its use. I look forward to hearing from a range of witnesses on both of these important consumer protection topics. And I'll now turn it over to Public Advocate Jumani Williams to make his statement.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. As was mentioned, my name is Jumani Williams, public advocate for the City of New York. I want to thank Chair Velazquez and the members of the committee and to more work of protection for holding this hearing and for allowing me to say a few words. I just want to allow myself with your words and your awesome article in City and State Today. Fundamentally, New Yorkers are protected by the First Amendment right to privacy. Individuals should expect that they can freely conduct private transactions without being surveilled. To that end, in 2021, my office partnered with then-Ballot President Gail Brewer, Amnesty International, S T O P, and A I for the People on a Ban the Scan campaign, raising awareness of the dangers of public and private use of facial recognition AI. At that time, I asked the previous administration to cease use of all facial recognition technology, permanently destroy data collected and used for facial recognition in the past, and publish data concerning each instance in which facial recognition technology was utilized. Through non-consensual data capture, businesses violate the right to privacy. We've also seen much concern when it comes to law enforcement. Individuals should not be removed from a place of business because their employer is involved in legal action against said business, especially when the business engages in its trade in the case at hand selling tickets to events and then reneges to allow the purchaser, repurchaser employee to redeem the ticket they purchased. The employee is not involved in a litigation. If any business could monitor and remove people because of a grievance against an employer or someone they have a relationship with, it would mean a world where businesses have the right to bar anyone from any establishment based on a tangential connection. Moreover, there was another instance where a parent was denied entry to an event on a school trip in which they were serving as an escort. This act created safety risk for the children, as well as creating a stressful situation for the other adult who had to care for more children on their own. Furthermore, citizens should not be photographed, recorded, and have personal information scanned without repercussions. In today's economy, privacy is highly valuable. As our data broker economy continues to grow, there must be measures in place to protect New Yorkers' privacy. It is unclear today whether facial recognition software used in private businesses is also selling the information to data brokers. While there are security concerns that impact the decisions-making of private businesses, the City of New York cannot let businesses poorly use facial recognition technology and run afoul of everyone's right to privacy as granted under the U.S. Constitution. It is important to note that many documented instances of facial recognition technology have racial and gender biases. Researchers at MIT reported in January 2019 that facial recognition software marketed by Amazon misidentified darker-skinned women 31% of the times, while others have shown that algorithms used in facial recognition return false at a higher rate for African-Americans than white people unless explicitly recalibrated for black population. Specifically, technology misidentified people with dark complexions 50% of the time as compared to only 3% of the time with light complexions. We also know and heard similar numbers when it comes to people transgender experience. These findings prompted experts at Google, Facebook, and Microsoft to sign a letter calling on Amazon to stop selling its facial recognition technology to law enforcement. Also, facial recognition technology is only one of several biometric technologies being developed for identification purposes. Others include long-range cardiac signature detection, gait analysis, and an iris scan. We must engage discussions on how to address and prevent the use and abuse of all these technologies. It can't be left up to businesses and big corporations or a few billionaires and millionaires. I also just want to say, as a person who suffers from the disease of Nick fandom when it comes to MSG, I have been scarred by many decisions of the owner, James Dolan. I have to say, it's getting a little better now, so I will put that out there. But as a New Yorker, many of the antics of the owner are much worse, much more harmful. From removing people from MSG to this now use of facial recognition, I do want to put on the record that I also believe we should be reviewing the renewal of the tax abatements and exploring moving MSG as well. My hope is that someone would have been here for MSG to answer some of these questions. It is really important. There's a point where private and public really come in connection, and we can't allow it to just run amok, and government has to step in. So, I'm glad we're having this hearing. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chair Velazquez and Public Advocate Williams. Good morning and welcome. My name is Sarah Swain, Council to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection, and I will be moderating this hearing. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone who is joining us via Zoom that you will be on mute until you are called on to testify, at which point you will be asked to accept to be unmuted by the host. I will be calling on public witnesses to testify after the conclusion of the administration's testimony and council member questions. So, please listen carefully for your name to be called. At this hearing, we will first be inviting testimony from the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, followed by testimony from members of the public. Councilmembers, you will be called on for questions after the panel has completed their testimony. Please note that councilmembers will have three minutes for questions, and we will be allowing a second round of questioning if needed. We will now call on representatives of the administration to testify. We will be hearing testimony from Carlos Ortiz, Assistant Commissioner of External Affairs and Policy at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. At this time, I will administer the affirmation. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to council member questions?
I do.
Let me begin.
Good morning, Chair Velazquez, Public Advocate Williams, and members of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. My name is Carlos Ortiz, and I am the Assistant Commissioner for External Affairs at the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. Thank you for the opportunity today to testify on instruction 8A relating to the disclosure of service fee charges for tickets to entertainment events in New York City. When it comes to price transparency, DCWP is committed to leading efforts to protect New Yorkers. One of the main ways that DCWP does that is by enforcing the Consumer Protection Law, which prohibits illegal trade practices like deceptive advertising that prey on consumers. DCWP also enforces protections governing disclosures of refund policies, layaway plans, and the sale of secondhand items. Businesses may at times hide costs to consumers by tacking on a variety of fees, such as service or processing fees, to an initial product price. The consumer may only find out the true cost of an item at the end of a transaction. This drip pricing approach is frustrating for consumers and can make it harder for them to budget for their purchases. Over the years, DCWP has supported regulatory initiatives to promote price transparency and reduce junk fees on the state and federal levels. In 2022, New York State passed a law that requires operators, ticket platforms, and ticket resellers to disclose the total cost of a ticket prior to the ticket being selected for purchase. The Consumer Financial Protection Bureau also launched a federal initiative to reduce or eliminate junk fees, such as overdraft or nonsufficient fund fees, which cost Americans billions of dollars annually. Likewise, other federal agencies, such as the Federal Trade Commission and the Department of Transportation, have recently pursued rule changes to crack down on junk fees and increase price disclosures. DCWP has submitted comments in support of these and other similar efforts to ensure price transparency at the local level. Turning to today's legislation, instruction 8 would require event operators to disclose service fees, along with the price of a ticket, on advertising and promotional materials. DCWP supports this bill and believes it will lead to greater price transparency in the entertainment sector. DCWP also recommends expanding the scope of this bill to require the disclosure of the full price of tickets at the time of sale. This change would ensure that consumers are aware of what they're going to pay for an entertainment event from its promotion to the moment of purchase. We look forward to working together with the council on this bill as it progresses through the legislative process. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify today about the disclosure of service fee charges for entertainment tickets, a problem that many New Yorkers know all too well. I look forward to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. So, does DCWP know how many commercial businesses in New York City use facial recognition technology?
Thank you, Chair. No, that is not information that we have at DCWP. Although, I'm sorry, I would mention, pursuant to your opening statement, commercial businesses are required to post signage if they are collecting biometric data, such as facial recognition, retina scans, fingerprints, et cetera.
And has DCWP ever received any consumer complaints related to the use of facial recognition technology by commercial businesses, or?
Apologies. No, we have not received complaints with respect to the collection of biometric data. In that particular case of that local law that is enforced by a private right of action, so can a New Yorker is able to bring that case forward on their own? Should there be a violation that's observed?
So, if someone just calls 311 to complain, you just tell them, hey, resolve this privately?
I'm not sure of the exact, what exactly is said, but I think they will be advised that they have a right, a private right of action with respect to this local law.
So, if someone is misidentified in a commercial context, what is their recourse?
What do you mean by misidentified?
So, let's use the example of going into Madison Square Garden for a concert, Bad Bunny, and all of a sudden, it misidentifies me as someone that they do not want there, and I am removed. What is my recourse?
Well, I think certainly, whenever you're purchasing a good or a service, for example, a ticket, there are, of course, terms and conditions that are agreed upon that would outline, for example, what refund policy might exist and what recourse that the consumer might have. I'd also say that if a consumer does feel that they've been targeted by a deceptive action, that they can always file a complaint with the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection, and we'll look into the facts of the complaint and see if there's something we can mediate, if there's something we can investigate on behalf of the consumer, or multiple consumers if that's the case.
So, it'd be calling you directly instead of 311, you think?
I mean, certainly, I'm always, my team is always available to be called directly. And I know I've mentioned the past, but you can contact us at communityaffairs@dcwp.nyc.gov. 311, of course, is also an option, as well as our website does have a functionality to submit complaints.
And then, after I go ahead and call you guys, do you start an investigation of what kind of support would you be able to provide the consumer that has been?
Generally, when I've had to deal with this in the past, I would ask the consumer for any type of documentation relating to their complaint. And that would, I think, help us start establishing any relevant facts. I think from there, it's really a case-by-case basis on what those documents point to, the particular allegations or observations that took place with respect to complaint.
Does DCWP have any concerns about the use of facial recognition technology by commercial businesses?
I think, I mean, personally, I think I recognize that it's a significant issue for many New Yorkers, and I can see, particularly if the council is having a hearing on it as well. From the perspective of the department, I do feel that we don't necessarily have the expertise around facial recognition technology or its implementation to provide a particular position.
So, I guess, like, in our hearings next month for funding, maybe we can have a conversation on that.
Well, I would.
And funding the agency to have more inspectors and whatnot.
I don't, yeah, I don't think I would ever, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say that I thought resources were important for our agency. I do consider consumer and worker rights in New York City to be one of the most important things we can be working on. That said, I know our commissioner has been focused on making sure that our agency stays centered on our mission, whether it's deceptive trade practices, whether it's workplace rights. And I know under this administration as well that there's been a concerted effort to build ties between different agencies to tackle multidisciplinary issues, such as this perhaps.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Brayu? Actually, Public Advocate? Okay.
Thank you. My question is, do DCWP have any concerns about the use of facial recognition technology?
Thank you, Councilmember. I think I would really have to defer to perhaps other subject matter experts around facial recognition technology. This is not something that we have enforcement authority over necessarily. I think the core of our work as it relates to consumer protection is really about preventing deception or other similar type practices. That isn't to say that consumers can be adversely affected by certain business practices outside of that, but that's where I think I might rely on another agency with closer ties to that.
Does DCWP have concerns about the storage of biometric data by consumer businesses?
Again, I think I'd have to defer again on that question, Councilmember. I'm sorry. You know, our understanding was that we would be discussing primarily instruction 8 and its overlay with price transparency, which really falls into kind of the bailiwick, so to speak, of our agency in terms of facial recognition technology. It's not something that we currently are involved in or have a level of technical expertise for.
If we were to assume that there was storage of biometric data by consumer businesses, that would not be a concern to the administration?
No, I wouldn't say that, sir. I would say.
So, there would be a concern?
I don't want to speak for other agencies is what I meant to say by my answer. I'm saying from the perspective of DCWP, it's not something that we work on or that we have the expertise for.
All right, thank you. What is the administration's position on limiting the use of facial recognition technology in New York City businesses? I'm assuming it's probably the same.
Yes, sir, I think it's the same answer there. I know in the past, the council and the previous administration did work on a particular local law around biometric data. But again, I think the touch point for our agency there was much more in line with what we do in our consumer protection work, which is signage requirements, but we don't have any particular enforcement authority over that. If you would be interested in more information from the administration, I'm happy to connect you with the Mayor's Office of City Legislative Affairs, and I think they could probably answer more questions specifically on the administration's position of facial recognition.
Yeah, we definitely like answers to those questions. Does the administration support Assembly Bill A 1362, which would establish a statewide biometric privacy act?
I'm not familiar with that legislation myself. I think I'd have to take a read of it first before I could provide a position on it.
And last question I have is, does the administration support federal legislation that would limit the ways in which the private sector may collect and use biometric data?
I think likewise there, I mean, with any type of legislation, we're happy to take a look at it and figure out what value we could be bringing to New Yorkers, how we could be protecting them from all types of business activities, or whether that's discrimination, or whether that's violations of privacy, such as the public advocate meant. I think the administration is always interested in looking into that. But for those cases, since they fall out of kind of the bailiwick of our agency, I would refer you to the Mayor's Office for further comment on that.
Thank you. And my final question is, does DCWP have any concerns about enforcing proposed intro 8A?
No, not necessarily. I think we feel like this is like the core of our work. We think it's an important protection. Price transparency is something that we want to ensure for all consumers in New York City. We do have suggestions of how to expand its scope somewhat to make sure that consumers, from the point of they're looking into a ticket, to the point of actually buying the ticket, have all the information in front of them. So, we're happy to work with council on that as we get through the legislative process.
Appreciate your openness there. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you. You mentioned, I think it was either testimony or questioning, that the businesses have to post whether they're using facial recognition.
That's correct, sir.
Are you aware of MSG has it posting?
I'm not aware if they have it posting or not, myself.
Are you aware of any other rules or regulations as related to facial recognition?
No, I'm most familiar with this local law on biometric data signage because it's something that the past administration worked on with the council and with our agency.
So, is it, I know you said you're not an expert, but is it fair to assume that there's not much more rules and regulations around facial recognition?
I don't, I mean, the city agencies is a wide landscape. I don't want to assume too much with respect to what other protections might be in place. I know that there are, of course, protections with respect to discrimination, both at the city and state level. I know that if any crimes are committed, there's certain protections there as well. I think, I wouldn't want to assume necessarily what is in place right now outside of my agency.
Got it. I would presume, hopefully I'm wrong, but I don't think so, that there's a lot more regulations and policy need to be put in place, which is part of the problem. And also, if I understand correctly, the recourse, the only recourse that someone has now if they feel like their rights are violated for the use of facial recognition is a private right of action?
Yes, that particular law requires that any business that's collecting the information disclose it via signage. And the only recourse in that sense is a consumer's private right of action, sir.
Thank you. I also just wanted to mention, because my understanding is that MSG was invited. I don't know if I see anyone here. Hopefully, someone may come later. If they don't come, I just want to say that I think it's pretty cowardly and disrespectful to the process and to this council. And I don't think this is the kind of thing that should only be litigated in the public. If you believe that you should be using this, you should come here and have a conversation about why so that people can publicly understand what's happening. So, I just want to make sure I put them on the record, and it's a shame that someone is not here. But, you know, too, if they're listening, I welcome having a conversation. I'm sure colleagues would as well. And this is something that is too important to just try to litigate it through newspapers and media. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Public Advocate. I have a couple of questions on behalf of Councilmember Chi Ose, who is with us virtually. The first question I have is, is DCWP doing any outreach on privacy? Know your rights to the public, or at least informing the public on what to do when they see this technology at a business? Many times, an average layperson who's going to a store or an event at an arena, MSG has been notorious in using this technology, will not know what to do when they're asked to do scans, nor are they aware of any rights protections or what happens with those scans after. So, what's the public information campaign is essentially what she's asking.
Thank you. In terms of the signage that the local law requires, that is available on our website, but we don't have, we have not. In terms of dedicated outreach around this, I don't think there's any that's been put in place.
Is there a reason why? Lack of funding, lack of initiative? What is it?
No, I would say in terms of our protections, what we try to focus on is outreach in things that we enforce. I think we're concerned at times, I think we would have a concern of, for example, doing outreach for something we don't enforce because that would lead a consumer or a New Yorker down the wrong path in terms of who they should be going to. And in terms of that particular local law, I think our focus is on making sure that the information was publicly available for people to go to if they were interested in finding out more about that. But our particular outreach efforts are more focused towards the Consumer Protection Law, paid safe and sick leave. These are the laws that we're actively enforcing out there and generating complaints for.
What kind of enforcement would you see DCWP being able to perform if, given the right legislation?
Do you mean with respect to facial recognition?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. I think it's, you know, it's an interesting question. I mean, generally, when you have new mandates that are being stood up, there are all types of resources that might be required, whether that's intake personnel, investigators. You need attorneys, of course, to be able to bring cases to oath on behalf of consumers. I think generally, for any type of mandate, that's, those are the type of needs that we would always look at. But again, I think we also want to build into what the mission is of the agency. And from our perspective, you know, the mission on consumer protection is around deception, you know, certain licensed entities that we have. I think in this case of biometric data or facial recognition, it's as much a civil rights issue as it could be a consumer issue. Nowwithstanding, I do think it's a consumer issue, just perhaps not one that is best tackled necessarily with DCWP as the tool.
Gotcha. The other question from Councilmember Ose is, what is DCWP and the city as a whole doing to prevent businesses from using this data to A, breach people's privacy, and then B, the use of this as surveillance information to aid in getting people arrested or entangled with the carceral system?
Yes, so I think I probably, to take that first part of that question, I don't know if there's anything that prevents companies from collecting this data. I think the one local law that I'm familiar with just requires commercial businesses to disclose that they're collecting this information. But again, I probably would circle back with my colleagues at the Mayor's Office or other agencies in case there's things that I'm not aware of.
Got it. All right, now, Councilmember Medden?
Oh, great. Thank you so much, Chair Velazquez. Just a couple of questions on the biometric technology law. How many inspectors are dedicated to enforcing this law at DCWP?
So, the law is actually enforced only by a private right of action and does not have administrative enforcement within it.
Is it DCWP's belief that the law should be amended so that we can actually have some more teeth in this law?
I think from our perspective, we would have concerns if we were tasked with any type of enforcement around facial recognition technology. We just don't feel that we're the best-equipped agency necessarily for that. But I think, you know, generally, I know this administration has an openness with council about amendments or legislation. But again, I feel like we would probably not be the ones that would want to take up that mantle necessarily.
Given though that the facial recognition technology is absolutely affecting consumers' privacy rights, has the agency spoken to other cities about what they're doing on facial recognition technology? Because obviously, New York is not the only city to be grappling. Because obviously, New York is not the only city to be grappling with this. We should be looking at other cities as models so we can figure out how to truly tackle this issue and protect consumers' privacy.
No, I think um, I think that's a point very well taken. I mean, I think that New York City, despite being uh the largest and greatest city in in the United States, it still can learn things from across the country. Um, um, I think it's a point well taken that that's something the administration can do. Uh, but the agency itself has not had conversations around that, um, given our 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 lack of touch point with facial recognition technology and biometric data.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Public Advocate?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair for being so courteous. Um, I have, um, I just want to understand the process. Uh, is DCWP primarily um complaint-driven, or do you go out and do um investigations on your own without complaints?
I think it would really depend on on the category that we're looking at. In a certain, certain activity that um uh we might focus on complaints, for example, have refund policies been posted, have certain signage been put up. Um, other types of protections we have in place um might might be proactive investigations, such as uh workplace investigations of paid safe and sick leave. Um, it really would depend, sir.
Um, so it uh since uh, this is such, the gravity of MSG and the and what they're doing is so much, can someone go out today to look and see if they have signage posted as legally required?
The seat, which which signage? The signage from the biometric data law?
Yes.
I don't know that that's something that we would do. Um, I.
Well, I'm making a request officially. Is there some other way I should make it?
I know, I think um, I can certainly uh, after this hearing, I can certainly circle up with our folks that at the agency down the, down the street and see what we can, what can be done there, sir. And get back to you as well, of course.
Thank you, and I'll circle around too.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, just to be clear on the request, it's all of the Madison Square Garden uh entertainment properties, just to make sure.
Well, I, again, I I think it's something, that's something that I'll bring back. I can't make any promises. I don't want to overpromise, but it's something that I will discuss with our folks, and I can get back to you today about what we can land on.
Thank you, and if we can, I would like to to know why we're unable to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair. We will now turn to public testimony. If you are in person, you'll please come up and take a seat at the table. And you may begin once the sergeant has notified you that time has started. You will have five minutes to testify, so please begin once the time starts. Council members who have questions for a particular panelist should let me know, and I will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. For panelists on Zoom, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. For those testifying in person, make sure that you press the button on the microphone, and the red light goes on so that we can hear your testimony. Our first panel will be a Zoom panel. We'll be hearing from State Senator Brad Hoileman Siegel.
Good morning. Uh, good morning. Morning, Madam Chair and colleagues on the City Council, Public Advocate. I'm State Senator Brad Hoileman Siegel. Um, I represent the forty-seventh Senate District, which runs from Christopher Street to one hundred and third on the west side. I'm testifying on behalf of myself and also Assembly Member Tony Simone, who represents the seventy-fifth Assembly District, which covers Chelsea, Hell's Kitchen, uh, and East Midtown, as well as part of the upper west side. We're deeply concerned about the growing use of facial recognition software in public spaces by private entities. In the State Senate, I carry multiple bills regulating the use of facial recognition technology, which has been a vacuum uh for regulation and oversight by various levels of government. So I'm very grateful to the City Council for considering this important issue. Facial recognition technology, as I'm sure you know, has proven to be inaccurate and discriminatory, and can lead to the misuse of personal biometric data without consent. There was a two thousand nineteen analysis by the National Institute of Standards and Technology of a hundred and eighty-nine facial recognition algorithms, the majority of the industry. And it found that this technology erroneously identifies black and Asian faces ten to one hundred times more often than it does white faces. The report discovered that women, the elderly, and children were also more likely to be falsely identified. And these discriminatory failures overlap. Women of color, and particularly young black women, have some of the poorest identification accuracy rates of any demographic. Other research has found that these algorithms also misidentify transgender men as women thirty-eight percent of the time, and non-binary people one hundred percent of the time. The technology also poses grave privacy concerns, as has been noted. As individuals' face information is usually collected without their consent, cannot be encrypted, and is therefore vulnerable to data security breaches or being resold. Uh, for all these reasons, facial recognition software should be used sparingly and cautiously. And yet, facial recognition technology is already being deployed in an array of concerning contexts. For example, members of this committee know that recent controversy around Madison Square Garden uh and Madison Square Garden's entertainment's use of disturbing uh use of facial recognition software to identify and eject patrons from the entertainment venues whom they deem to be hostile to their legal or financial interests. MSG Entertainment has repeatedly deployed this technology against attorneys who represent clients suing MSG, and even against people working at the same firms who have nothing to do with those cases. This practice is deeply worrisome because it sets a precedent for private companies to chill free speech by denying access to those who disagree. This policy also violates the privacy of entertainment patrons who have no idea their biometric information is being collected at a casual sports outing. Essentially, when you walk into Madison Square Garden, you are immediately treated as a suspect. This policy is clearly not about public safety on Madison Square Garden's part. It's about retaliation against Madison Square Garden's perceived enemies, chilling speech, and access to the courts. Where does it end? Journalists, labor, banning someone from going to their local grocery store? The owner of Madison Square Garden Entertainment says the garden can do whatever it wants because it's, quote, private property, and that MSG, quote, has a right to defend itself. To that, I would say, if it's your private property, perhaps they should be paying property taxes. That's another point. But facial recognition technology allows Madison Square Garden to retaliate and potentially discriminate at a scale that would not be possible without the technology. This flawed technology and the manner in which it is deployed is an attack on all of our privacy and civil liberties. I carry legislation in Albany to address this issue by closing a loophole that allows the owners of Madison Square Garden to deny entry to those individuals who are attending a sporting event. It's already illegal to deny admission to Broadway musicals, public talks, and concerts if you have a valid ticket. But this loophole in New York statute exempts sporting events from the rule, and our bill would close this loophole. Again, I want to thank the committee for investigating this use of facial recognition technology by private businesses. And would urge you to also investigate and highlight similarly problematic uses, which we are also hoping to address in Albany, such as the use of facial recognition technology by law enforcement and residential landlords. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm hopeful we can make progress on this important issue.
Right on time. That was excellent, Senator.
I practiced.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Farias and Councilmember Medan, who have joined us.
We wanted to thank you so much for your testimony, looking forward to working with you on legislation uh to rectify and to help impacted uh consumers uh by this.
Thank you. The next panel will be in person. It will be Samuel Davis, followed by Meg Foster, followed by Nina Loschkeian, followed by Jake Parker. The first two panelists may take a seat at the table. Make sure that when you begin, your microphone is turned on.
Thank you, Chair Velazquez, and council members for inviting me to speak today at this incredibly important hearing at a time in the marriage, if you will, of facial recognition and AI, which we've all heard so much about in the last few months. But we still, if you ask anyone at, except perhaps at the level of uh someone from uh a tech company or professors at Stanford or NYU in this, we have no real concept of how invasive this technology is. We just know that we have seen an extraordinarily troubling turn of events. On November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, as you discussed, my associate Kelly Conlin was chaperoning her nine-year-old daughter's Girl Scout troop at the annual Christmas spectacular show at Radio City Music Hall. Almost immediately after entering the building, she was confronted by two security guards. They handed her a one-page notice and then proceeded to eject her in front of her daughter and her other Girl Scouts. Unbeknownst to her, Kelly had been flagged by a covert facial recognition system used by Madison Square Garden. What we have since learned is that although MSG claims to use this technology at its properties to promote the safety and security of its patrons, this is simply not happening. Sadly, it appears that Ms. Conlin was identified by this technology because she was an employee of my firm and had therefore been put on a list that included several thousand lawyers from over ninety other firms. She was included on this list because my firm represented an individual in a personal injury case against a restaurant that was later acquired by Madison Square Garden. It was a case that Kelly Conlin had absolutely no involvement in or knowledge of. MSG's use of facial recognition in this way has led to significant public backlash as lawmakers, civil rights advocates, and other members of the public recognize the serious danger posed by MSG's use of this rapidly evolving surveillance tool. Please do not let companies like MSG turn public accommodations into places where you leave your right to free speech at the door, where an opinion expressed on a T-shirt is your ticket to a lifetime ban, and where uttering "sell the team" can get you excluded from venues all over the world. When you weaponize facial recognition, you invade our fundamental right to privacy. You stifle our freedom of speech, and Americans, and especially New Yorkers, will not sit by and allow stadiums, theaters, or restaurants in their city to be cleansed of dissident fans or customers who pose absolutely no threat to the security of others. In Kelly's words, she wants to take the humiliation she suffered and her daughter suffered, and turn it into something positive. She is grateful that this council is taking a hard look at these dangerous and dystopian practices. Thank you. I know it's stunning, a lawyer finished two minutes ahead of time and is not arguing for more time. I I credit that to uh your administration, who told me it was two minutes, so that's a great move.
Anytime. We're trying to be generous, though. Um, uh, so we have a couple of just questions for those impacted, and we're just literally while your firm has been impacted, uh, we just want to discuss like local law three, the one that we mentioned earlier uh of twenty twenty-one, requires that all commercial establishments in New York City that are collecting, using and retaining biometric identifier information to disclose this to consumers. Do you think that this notice uh would impact your decision to enter commercial businesses or uh that use this technology?
Well, first of all, let me um address, the answer to that question directly is no. And I will tell you that we as consumers are simply not accustomed to reading the small print, looking at a sign that's perhaps written in legalese, or as in this case, signs written which simply don't disclose what they're really using the data for. So I don't think it'll have an impact. And I'll tell you, it's it seems like a terrible price to pay that now when we go to uh a public venue, when we go to a hotel, registering at a hotel, if you look at the small print, it will tell you without an opt-out, that the hotel has different forms of they just call it surveillance cameras, and the footage that they obtain, they can use in perpetuity for any purpose they choose. Commercial, they can show it anywhere, they can use it for profit. And it would be, I think, I think it would require some aggressive legislation to dissuade companies like MSG and all companies that are doing business uh in New York from being sneaky and sly about this. And of course, all this happens at a time where how can you trust this technology? I mean, especially for minorities. How do you trust it when it has those rates of of error, of inaccuracy, that all come down hard on minorities? I think that the time for the use of these technologies perhaps has not come. And if it has come, it must be restricted to security purposes only. Now, you asked me a question about signage. And uh because of the timing uh of my presentation, I I didn't present information about the signage, but let me tell you that after Kelly was ejected, uh, I went over and looked at the signs. Matter of fact, I went over there with the intention of trying to experience what Kelly did when she was ejected. Fortunately, unfortunately, it didn't pick me up. I I don't know why. I just walked in. I wasn't wearing sunglasses or a Groucho Marx nose. But I did look for the signage, and uh the signage was inconspicuously posted. In other words, the signs were facing sideways. Then when I finally took a real good look at the signs, the signs only said, "For security purposes only." That's a misrepresentation. And the deeper that you dig into the facts surrounding not only MSG, but so many businesses, you are going to find that there is a pattern of deception, a pattern of, you know, so few people read these signs, but the ones who do going into MSG come away with, you know, an impression that's totally inaccurate. I mean, their sign said "Important notice, the safety of everyone, to ensure the safety of everyone in our venue, Radio City Music Hall employs a variety of security measures, including facial recognition, which uses biometric identifier information." So, um, yeah, we did challenge them on that, uh, the propriety of their signage, and um that was at Radio City. And the MSG signage was a little different. It said, uh, "Important notice, uh, Madison Square Garden is a world-famous arena, and in order to ensure the safety of everyone in our venue, we employ a variety of security measures, including facial recognition, which uses biometric identifier information." And uh, the correction that they made, they recently made uh to bring their signage uh into compliance with section twelve oh two of uh the city's uh law still does not, although it recites the magic words, it still does not tell you what they're using it for. But I think as the facts emerge in this case, and I suspect they will, since there is um quite a bit of litigation uh pending on many, many fronts from as far away as is quite a bit of litigation pending on many, many fronts, from as far away as Delaware and a shareholder's derivative action, which I would point out, MSG is restricting lawyers who are involved, representing MSG shareholders, from going into the garden. But as this investigation unfolds, I think you will find that the prescription against sharing, trading, or otherwise using for profit has been violated. And the problem is that there is no transparency. So I don't know how to draft the law, but I know that the law must be very clear, it must provide for transparency, it probably needs a pack of watchdogs to cover this city. But I think that as a result of doing that, and I, as I understand it, this is probably your fact-finding effort to take the legislation and find out if what you did back in 2021 is working, and see what you need to do to make it work, so that the public is aware of exactly what their biometric identifier information is being used for, how long it's being stored, who's storing it, and in this case, and this is not just an MSG issue, it's not an MSG issue, but I submit that if MSG can get away with this, then you are going to have a slippery slope of surveillance in the city, and New York, parenthetically, has the highest density of surveillance cameras in the country. If MSG gets away with it, then our privacy is a memory of what life was like, maybe around the turn of the century, but not what it's like now.
Thank you. I have Councilmember Fariyas, who has a question for you.
I have like a question slash statement. So facial recognition is like something that is, for me, really important to try to see how the municipality can have a major role in putting in protections for just citizens, for people that are going to and from businesses or concerts. And so I guess for me, outside of the state and the city's role that, you know, what we're trying to do here with putting in these laws or putting in these bans or certain sorts of restrictions or limitations to where and how they could be utilized, what do you see as the city's role or the state's role in even educating consumers and residents on what facial recognition is? You know, as we've been learning over the last several months, like, we have young people to older people alike that are using TikTok, that it's very much a facial recognition AI that is taking pictures and manipulating it, or taking your face and manipulating it and storing it for later usage to be consumed in a different way. And so I've always thought of this on the aspect, or at least of the side of, outside of all of the things where we are trying to be proactive on instead of responsive to, which we're already behind, so we're always going to be responsive to this, what is our role, or do you see us having a role of any, in trying to inform the public enough that they can see how protective of their own, of their own autonomy in this process be, if anything at all?
You brought up a really important point, and that is, Americans are oblivious. When we sign up for these apps, whatever they are, Tic-Tac, they're oblivious that corporations somewhere, maybe here, maybe in China, one of our political enemies in Russia, they have all of this data because it's so easy to get. So parenthetically, when Dolan wanted to go after lawyers in an attempt to, I don't know, dissuade a lot of litigation, which wasn't so successful, what he did was he went to our websites and he scraped that information from us. And I can tell you what a dystopian experience it is when you are confronted at a venue by five or six security guards accompanied by a uniformed New York police officer, and they all have on their phones, as they're surrounding you, they all have your picture, which you recognize from your website, and then they proceed to ask you, "Is your name..." And of course, my answer was, "If you don't know my name..." They probably know what day of the week I was born on and, you know, what car I drove to the venue. So I think educating the public is critically important. In a way, it's almost like our, protecting our environment. There are people who say, you know, "It's too late, this is, this is gonna happen." And I, by the way, I applaud what you're doing because I learned so much from your hearing on the disposables, about the, about the Texas-sized, I learned so much about that, it's changed my behavior. Unfortunately, you can't just educate people and have them hear that the genie's out of the bottle, all of this data, billions and billions of pieces of data, everybody in this country, they have a dossier on that is now accessible using artificial intelligence in nanoseconds. You have to reinforce that, yes, we can do something. And doing something often has to take into account what the political realities are. And the political realities with facial recognition are that there are some big lobbies and many politicians who are going to listen to corporations and not to consumers and workers. And they're gonna fight it. And they are well-equipped to fight it, better equipped to fight it on a federal level and on a state level. You have taken a bold move by being the tip of the spear. And the fact that you are bringing this to a head will mean that action will be done, whereas, for example, the state legislation, which we don't have time to go into now, it's good. I mean, it's got a lot of great points, but the chances of it getting passed are a lot lower than what you're doing. So I applaud you for that. And yes, your action and your inquiry is critical in staving off this dystopian state, which we all hope is not progressing at the same speed that global warming is, or faster.
Thank you so much for that. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection for holding this hearing today. My name is Meg Foster. I'm a legal fellow testifying on behalf of the Center on Privacy and Technology at Georgetown Law. The Center is a research and advocacy organization that works to expose and mitigate the disparate impact of surveillance technology on historically marginalized groups, and we have been studying face recognition for the past eight years. Most of the efforts to limit or ban facial recognition to date have quite appropriately focused on its use by the government, primarily law enforcement, and the myriad harms stemming from that use, including but not limited to the wrongful arrest and incarceration of at least four black men. But in the absence of parallel efforts in the private sector, face recognition companies have successfully pivoted to selling their products to businesses, thereby substantially shrinking the number of spaces in which we are not subject to a watchful eye. With that in mind, there are three risks to consumers and workers that I'd like to highlight today. First, as illustrated by the widely reported on incident at Radio City Music Hall, businesses can use face recognition punitively to ban from their establishments anyone that they deem to be an adversary, be it lawyers, whistleblowers, and former employees, or public critics. Such practices are not only wholly contrary to free speech principles, but they discourage and impede the transparency and accountability needed to protect workers' rights, public health and safety, and meaningful competition. Second, businesses may also use face recognition to engage in unlawful discrimination. Profession may not be a protected class, but the ability to categorically identify and exclude a group of people, as MSG did and does, suggests that that practice can indeed extend to those who are protected under New York state and city public accommodation laws. Moreover, biases in face recognition software I first discovered over a decade ago still persist today, putting people of color, women and children, and the elderly at risk of being misidentified and wrongfully denied access to services, products, and experiences. And that's not speculative, that has happened. Finally, the private sector lacks even the few legal safeguards that exist in the governmental context. Because businesses are not subject to, are subject neither to constitutional law nor public records laws, consumers and workers have scant opportunity to discover, let alone challenge, this invasive yet largely invisible technology. Despite its proliferation, there is little evidence that face recognition technology provides any real benefits to society, including for security. On the other hand, there is a plethora of evidence that it causes serious and far-reaching harms. Left unchecked, the exclusion of high-power attorneys from popular entertainment venues will be just the tip of the iceberg when it comes to businesses using face recognition for nefarious purposes. For that reason, I urge the committee to consider each introducing, at the very least, legislation that prohibits the use of face recognition technology by New York City businesses, but ideally, together with the rest of the city council, a more comprehensive moratorium that addresses the uses and abuses of face recognition in all contexts. I greatly appreciate the committee's attention to this important matter, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. So since you, as you stated at the outset, have been studying this issue for a number of years, what have you seen successfully done in other jurisdictions legislatively?
So there hasn't been a lot of success. As I mentioned, a lot of the bans and limitations have only been with government use, and that's one of the reasons we're here today, because there are far too many loopholes for businesses. One state that has had success is Illinois with the Biometric Information Privacy Act. That has caused ClearView AI to actually virtually withdraw from the state of Illinois because that act requires consent from consumers before biometric information can be collected, which is virtually impossible when you're engaging in persistent, real-time surveillance.
What was that called again?
BIPA, the Biometric Information Privacy Act in Illinois.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The next two panelists can come up to the table, Nina Loesch-Kagian and Jake Parker.
Yeah, it's a very faint light. Good morning, Chair Velazquez, members of the committee. My name is Nina Loesch-Kagian, and I'm a legal fellow at the Surveillance Technology Oversight Project, or STOP for short. We are a New York City-based civil rights and anti-surveillance group. I really appreciate the opportunity to testify today on the harms of facial recognition technology, and we are here specifically to urge the council to ban the use of this discriminatory and invasive software in places of public accommodation. At the outset, thank you so much, Chair Velazquez, for taking action and for organizing this important hearing, but generally, we are disappointed with the council that this hearing is so narrowly focused and that the council is seemingly ignoring the threat of facial recognition in other contexts, as other panelists have mentioned, used by police and used by landlords. Public Advocate Williams, in his initial statement, mentioned that he had worked with us and other organizational partners to draft legislation that would ban the use of facial recognition in multiple contexts, and we're disappointed that we've been pushing that legislation for over a year and is, yes, yet to be introduced or included in any agenda for committee hearings. So it just seems like the council keeps putting our privacy rights and our civil rights on the back burner, but we do appreciate this council, this hearing being held today by the council. When it comes to business use, New Yorkers should not be forced to hand over their biometric data just to pick up groceries or to go to a concert. As many have mentioned, facial recognition is biased and error-prone. Because of the AI that it runs on being infected by human bias, it is much more likely to misidentify a young woman of color than it is to misidentify a middle-aged white man. And it is incredibly invasive to allow businesses to collect this data, making them extremely vulnerable targets for hackers, let alone, you know, allowing them to engage in selling this data to data brokers. And this tool, with the bias it built in, can and does end up in the hands of people with terrifying potential to misuse or abuse it. As many have talked about, James Dolan is using it to seek vengeance against his foes, blocking access to ticket holders affiliated with law firms suing him. I'm not just concerned about this because I'm personally a lawyer myself, it's easy to envision companies using this against workers more broadly, you know, barring whistleblowers from within their, you know, employees within their business. So this is really a consumer and a worker issue, I want to highlight that. Given the bias, invasiveness, and potential for abuse of facial recognition, it has no place in New York businesses, and yet it does. Facial recognition is already harming New Yorkers, and its use must be banned now. As I mentioned, we are pushing bills to ban the use of facial recognition by police and other government agencies, by landlords, and by owners of places of public accommodation. Our proposed legislation specifically prohibits places of public accommodation from using biometric surveillance tools and any information derived from biometric surveillance tools. I just want to address, there's been some discussion of the local law that was passed a couple of years ago, and that is not even an opt-in regime, you know, it's just making it a requirement for businesses to post, and we think our position at STOP is that bills like that are relatively meaningless because, as a lot of previous panelists have mentioned, you know, a lot of consumers aren't aware of what they're reading or how that data is actually being used. And so we think the only real answer here is a ban on use of facial recognition, that's the only way to truly protect New Yorkers. And this would prevent abuses like those we've seen at MSG. So we're hoping for a hearing in the near future and that council members will support our bills. Again, thank you so much for this opportunity to testify and for holding this hearing.
Is it on there? Okay. Hi, I'm Jake Parker with the Security Industry Association. And thank you, Chair Velazquez, members of the, of the committee here. So our organization's a nonprofit trade association representing more than seventy companies headquartered in New York, more than thirteen hundred nationwide. Our members provide a range of safety and security products and services throughout the US and in the state. Among them are developers of facial recognition technology for a variety of government, commercial, and consumer applications. I was invited to provide some information on the business uses of this technology. So starting with what the technology is, it's pretty simple. Software that matches facial images by comparing an image presented with one or more that has been enrolled in the system. This technology has matured, and it's proven to be incredibly useful across many different types of applications. And I wanted to stop here and address the characterizations of the, of the technology performance that we heard about earlier in the hearing are just not accurate. Two issues. One is, the reference was made to old research on face classification technology, gender classification, which is not matching, it's not facial recognition, and also reference to a four-year-old study from the government about the rate of, of false positives, that information's quite old now, but also that same report said that the highest-performing technology had almost undetectable differences across demographics, and the figure that was cited was literally the lowest-performing ones. So if you look at the most recent US government evaluation, you'll find that the top hundred and fifty technologies are more than ninety-nine percent accurate overall across black, white, male, female demographics. So considerations when implementing this technology are gonna vary quite a bit, even including the privacy implications, depending on each specific application and its purpose. And at SIA, we believe any advanced technology would, should only be used for purposes that are lawful, ethical, and non-discriminatory. So for business use, in nearly all cases, they're utilizing this technology as a better way to accomplish a pre-existing underlying process of verification or identification that's already occurring through other, less effective means. And these purposes generally fall into two different categories, either enhancing business operations or optimizing the functionality or security of products and services used by consumers. The vast majority of these applications are opt-in and based on prior consumer consent. So in our written testimony, I've detailed many different use cases for business, but I'll share just four here that are relevant to New York City and used by businesses in the city that I'm aware of. The first is access control. The technology provides a way The technology provides a way for employees or their authorized individuals to securely enter a facility, speed through security checkpoints, and reduce touchpoints. We're finding a lot of utilization by large office buildings to address throughput issues at peak times. Also, we understand there's virtual guarding of entry doors is an emerging use. It is being rapidly adopted at major US sports and entertainment venues to enhance fan experiences by enhancing mobile order pickup, age verification, streamlined payment, and VIP access. The Cleveland Browns and the Atlanta Falcons stadiums and many others are already doing this. I haven't experienced this yet personally, but I'm looking forward to it. How many times have you missed a key moment in a sports game when you're waiting in line for food? It's been used also to provide credentialing for field access as well as locker rooms where it's not convenient for athletes to carry cards or keys. When it comes to safety and security for customers and employees, businesses have a really serious obligation to provide the most effective safety, depending on their unique security risks. From office buildings to small venues like bars and nightclubs to larger ones, using facial recognition as part of security screening offers advantages over the existing processes. It can cross-reference images with a limited gallery of known individuals known by the operator to provide alerts to staff for a wide range of purposes to protect occupants, such as controlling access when there's been threats of violence, a protective order involving a specific individual. And this is important because individuals who are barred for security reasons are unfortunately very likely to ignore this policy and come anyway. Additionally, as I think we know, retailers are getting slammed by organized retail crime, and facial recognition is one of the key technologies available to stem this tide. The recent rapid growth in this crime is something we should all be concerned about. Retailers have seen about a 30% increase over the last year in this type of crime. There's a real human cost which extends beyond the initial victims as the revenue from organized retail crime fuels drug smuggling, human trafficking, and other criminal enterprises, as well as the violence that comes with it. So this technology can strengthen existing loss prevention programs as a theft prevention tool, and not typically for apprehension, which is important. When a repeat offender enters a store, a manager receives an alert, and they're able to approach the customer with the goal of offering excellent customer service rather than apprehending them. I recently heard one report that this process was enough to help the retailer turn away a shocking 90% of their repeat offenders, and I've heard other reports that are very similar throughout the country. I will go ahead and answer. So, just lastly, we've done some public opinion research about this technology. The vast majority of Americans are supportive of using it in everyday applications. We found 70% are comfortable with its use to improve security at their workplace, for example. And just one last thing, I know we're talking about some additional policy proposals, but caution against overreach and restricting the use of technology is where this has happened. It's already been rolled back in some jurisdictions. Over the last year, the state of Virginia, California, city of New Orleans, and the city of Baltimore have all removed prohibitions on the technology. Quite happy to answer any questions you have.
You had mentioned early on, what percent of misidentification is actual now? Because you said the rates that we were stating were incorrect. And where are you drawing that information from?
Yeah, so it's important to distinguish here with misidentification. I think usually what people are referring to when they said are false positives, right? So if you look back at the research that we cited, it's talking about gender classification software looks at a photo of a person, says it's a male, female, or an approximate age, race, and other things like that. That's where that misidentification is assigning the wrong gender or the wrong, you know, attribute. And so that's where those figures come from. As I mentioned earlier, 50% error rate, that's where that comes from. As far as the false positive rates, that is, that is a... The US government measures all different sorts of performances on facial recognition technology. That's just one of them. More commonly, the actual error is false negative, where if a failure to match is a false negative. So that's much more relevant to determining how well the technology works. Hope that helps.
How many providers are there of facial recognition technology that you are aware of?
So there's the providers of the core software technology, the algorithms. And then there's also, so that's one set of, and there's other companies that are using those within other products. But I'd say as far as the core developers, I think there's probably 20 to 25 that are the leaders.
Yeah, I'm like having a hard time whether or not to ask any questions. But you made a statement, and I just want, for clarification. You said in your testimony that you haven't been able to experience it yet, like at a game or at a concert.
Not myself.
But you're excited to in the future. Respectfully, like as a white man, like I don't know if that's generally how the rest of black and brown communities will feel about facial recognition technology being utilized in that way. Granted, I'm seeing a lot of different data here that you've listed along with... I mean, I guess my first question around enhancing business operations, what do you see that, or what does that mean in a small local shop using facial recognition technology?
Well, sure, addressing your first point, what I was speaking about was an opt-in voluntary program you could do as a, you could enroll in as a family.
Yeah, ultimately, like that's our problem, right? Like, businesses, law enforcement, MSG, perfect example, are utilizing this technology without notifying people equitably in a real way, right? Even having, I mean, we all see when we go shopping, there's always a store, whether they have a security camera, what type of it, we don't quite know. We just assume it's a regular, you know, CCTV kind of thing where it's recording for 30 days in the back of the room. We don't know where that data goes. No one really gets to opt in to even just having a surveillance camera for theft or burglary or anything like that in a business. But this is like a different type of technology that people really don't quite understand. And while I can see some pluses for businesses, and I'm trying to get from you, what is enhancing business operations when you can facially recognize every patron that comes through your doors and every worker that you have? How is that, what enhances are there? I feel like I have to be missing something.
Yeah, I would say, first of all, I don't think that's what is happening, identifying everyone that comes to the door. That's not, you know, that's not what's occurring. But I think, so we would say that for business commercial use, there has to be a legitimate business purpose for the technology. That's, we have a set of guidance and implementation principles that we published. So, that's really the key. It needs to be, and I would say, it needs to be something that enhances safety and security of the occupants of the areas being protected, or something that enhances customer experience and services.
Okay. And then optimizing functionality and security of products and services used by customers, is that, that's like what you were relating to, like theft and like having repeat offenders coming in and out?
Well, no, I would say that's more business operations.
Okay.
As far as enhancing services, that's making sure that you can, for example, use facial recognition as a form of payment, so you don't have to, so it can, you know, speed up the process of paying for something. It also makes it so you don't have to expose other information, such as your social security number, you know, driver's license number, address, other things that actually are more vulnerable to abuse if they are compromised. Saves you having to provide that kind of information that would go to a database that then can be breached. So your biometric data that forms a template from your face when it's used in matching, by itself, that is useless outside of the software that creates it. So if that data is compromised, it's, no one can do anything with it. They can't even recreate your photo from it.
And in the survey, because, and I plan to read the rest of it, I don't see any of the stats here with my quick scan. Do we know, do you have any, like any data in your survey of businesses that are utilizing it or companies that are utilizing it? And where they store data, what they've done with data, what agreements they have with localities or states in terms of law enforcement usage or other usages of their data?
So law enforcement use is really a completely different way of using the technology and set of considerations. But I'd say, for the most part, this technology, when it's provided, it's, there's a supplier, it's provided to the end user, they're the ones that actually would populate a database and use it for their purposes. So the provider of the technology is not holding that data, usually. They might be hosting it in a private cloud or something like that, but they typically don't, they're not the ones that are accessing it.
So you don't, I mean, you haven't surveyed anyone that, on whether or not they have local agreements or state or city agreements with their local law enforcement? Because I, I'm sorry, right before. I do think like, yes, we watch movies and we think it's super cool when you get to like get your face scanned to enter a room. Like people kind of associate it sometimes in that way. There's no real connection sometimes in what this could mean for people. But really, when it comes down to like nuts and bolts, what we see is we do see really vague and non-transparent connections to how the data is utilized. Or municipalities have agreements with their law enforcement with how businesses will need access or not to any of their capability of holding on to this data. So sometimes, I mean, I'm not saying like every business is saying, you know, check yes, we're going to give up all of this, but sometimes the municipalities themselves will say, well, we need this because something happened or because this is under investigation. So I'm just wondering if you have pulled anyone on what their responsibility is to that and/or, you know, if they've had to do that.
So I'm not aware of any arrangements where a business would share the actual biometric data with law enforcement. It's not typically the way it works. They have, they might have photo evidence that comes from an incident, and then the law enforcement does, completely on their end, you know, as far as investigating that. So, does that help?
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead. Okay, just a couple of questions on this survey. So one of the things that I see missing from your surveys, I don't see anything about surveying concert venues, sports stadiums. It seems that this poll is more geared to airlines, TSA, banks, and schools. Did you do anything more on other types of businesses?
Yeah, so what I provided in there is just a top-line summary. There's a lot of other data points in there, it's on our website for the survey. Also, I will mention, it was done several years ago now, so that is actually one of the sort of newer emerging uses of the technology. It's sports and entertainment venues for, you know, fan experience.
Right, that was going to be my second point. I noticed this survey is done from August 2020, and now, you know, three years later, we're in a very different world around facial technology, where now it's really exploded into these, again, concert venues, stadiums, places where people do not expect to have, be surveyed and surveilled on by facial recognition. So this survey three years ago just seems not to be as on point as what we're discussing today. You don't have any more recent data?
Not specifically on sports venues, but I will say this, that type of application I was mentioning before is not surveillance. That's a matter of using it to authenticate your identity for services. It's completely different than surveillance. So, and I also would say, your, you know, venues are using this technology for security purposes. You know, every venue is going to have a list of individuals that are prohibited. Doesn't matter where it is in the country, there's issues even, you know, a bar in a small town. They're going to have someone who is violent or, you know, someone who said, look, you can't come back here. So, they're responsible to their patrons to protect them, and they're going to implement some kind of policy like that, whether they have the technology or not. But if you're not, if you're not in that category, you're not being surveilled because there's no reference identity to match you with. Only the folks that are enrolled with their image on, in that category can be matched.
So businesses like Clear, that are enabling us to beat the lines, right? Whether it's going into Yankee Stadium or going to the airport, how do you see that continuing? And what are the benefits, but also how do we ensure that that data is protected?
Yeah, so there's a lot of standard data protection techniques the company will use to protect that. We said earlier that somehow it can't be encrypted. I don't know where that comes from, but usually the facial template is encrypted. And so, you know, that's one thing. Allowing you to verify your identity that way speeds up the process. I know TSA is expanding the use of the technology to be able to match you against your actual electronic photo on your ID, which is more secure and faster. And one example too, I don't know if you've ever tried to clear customs coming back from an international trip or from a cruise. So I know a lot of the cruise lines now, and this is a CBP function, but they'll allow you to clear customs using your face matched to your electronic, electronically to your passport. The last time I did that, I think we got off the ship in like 20 minutes, and I remember taking hours, you know, before that. So there's a lot of benefits there. It's the same process you're doing, just instead of someone looking at it, you're having, you know, the machine match it, so. And I know that the cruise lines are also starting to use, you know, on the private sector side, they're using that as a way to access your account on the ship and to pay for things on the ship.
I guess one of our more important questions, and I'm sure we're hammering this, but how can we better protect our consumers from the misuse of this facial recognition technology from commercial businesses?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I don't know how to answer that exactly, but I know that there's, you definitely have to start with a biometric data law that you have here in the city, which is the first of its kind at the municipal level. It's the only jurisdiction I know of that requires signage requirement, which I think is actually pretty important for transparency purposes. Maybe that could be improved. But, and also, as was mentioned earlier, bars the sale of that biometric data collected, which I think is important, so.
Thank you so much. Thank you both. Our next panel will be a Zoom panel. We'll be starting with Jeremy Scott, then we will be going to Andrew Ridgey, and then Daniel Schwartz.
Chair Velazquez and members of the committee, thank you for this opportunity to testify today. My name is Jeremy Scott. I am senior counsel at the Electronic Privacy Information Center, or simply EPIC, as well as director of the EPIC's Project on Surveillance Oversight. EPIC is an independent, nonprofit research organization in Washington DC established to protect privacy, freedom, freedom of expression, and democratic values in the information age. EPIC has paid particularly close attention to facial recognition because it is a dangerous technology whose risk increases as the technology expands, whether that expansion is by the government or businesses. The technology poses a serious threat to our privacy, our civil liberties, our constitutionally protected rights, and our democracy. Facial recognition has accuracy and bias issues that are most likely to impact marginalized groups. But even a perfectly accurate and unbiased facial recognition system poses fundamental risks to democratic society when widely deployed. Allowing New York City businesses to freely implement the use of facial recognition as they choose would have a negative effect on the city. There are two points in particular I would like to stress. First, facial recognition destroys anonymity and removes control of identity from the individual. It will become a de facto universal digital ID controlled by large corporations and/or the government. No longer will individuals have a say when they are identified. Identification will happen on a regular basis, with or without your consent, or even without your knowledge. A black box will be created around how companies use the massive amounts of identification data collected by businesses in New York City. And incidents like that which occurred at Radio City Music Hall will become more commonplace, and where you work, among other innocuous factors could affect your ability to enter certain venues. Legislators who support a bill that a particular business does not like may find themselves unable to enter the venues that business controls. There will be a record of everywhere you go to be aggregated and analyzed as some business sees fit. The second point is that allowing businesses to freely implement facial recognition technology will create the infrastructure for mass face surveillance that will undoubtedly lead to mission creep. Whatever the original purpose of the facial recognition, it will expand to other purposes, commercial as well as government, particularly for law enforcement. I urge the council to take action on facial recognition and stop its unfettered expansion and ban private entities from using facial recognition technology in places of public accommodation. But at minimal, the council should implement a law similar to Illinois's Biometric Information Privacy Act that would prevent the use of biometrics on individuals without informed consent, limit the use of that data, and provide a personal right of action for violations of law. Importantly, such a law should make sure that people are not forced to consent, either by not providing an alternative or making alternatives so arduous as to not be an actual choice. Additionally, I'd like to agree with some of the previous witnesses who suggested that the council should comprehensively address the use of facial recognition by not just businesses, but the government as well, particularly law enforcement. And I also like to make a point related to something the previous panelist said about identity verification. I want to make clear that that can be a form of surveillance, in particular, when that verification identity is kept on record. For instance, when you enter the airport, if they're keeping that on record, that you were at the airport at this time, and you were identified, that is a form of surveillance. But with that, I thank you for the opportunity to testify today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your...
Next will be Andrew Rigi.
Hello, I'm Andrew Rigi, the executive director of the New York City Hospitality Line. Sorry, I'm not there. Interesting conversation uh about facial recognition. I'm actually gonna speak about the other bill uh proposed intro number eight A um in relation to the disclosure of total ticket costs and advertisement. We think this is important to have these fees disclosed to consumers, but we do think there are three important amendments we'd like to see to the bill. Uh, the first one is we wanna make sure that if a restaurant or a bar is selling a ticket to an event, a concert at their establishment using a third-party platform, that the business will not be held liable uh for violating the law if the third-party platform doesn't provide the appropriate tech infrastructure to allow that restaurant, bar, nightclub to disclose the total fees as required under the law, um including the ability to separately list the various fees. Uh, you could probably go and look at language from the recent bill that was enacted, the Skip the Stuff Bill, uh which requires restaurants to only provide plastic utensils and condiments to customers upon request. There was a provision that was added to that, similarly, which essentially said if the third-party delivery platform didn't allow the restaurant to comply, they couldn't be held liable. So we just wanna make sure that that's addressed. Um, the second one point in the proposal, it lists a maximum fine of five thousand dollars. I think I saw a council member, Menon here, who has a great bill that addresses uh this issue or what I'm gonna get to is we would like to see a minimum fine amount, say a hundred dollars, um added to this proposed uh law, essentially giving the administrative law judge a range that they can clearly um use when they would levy any type of fine to a small business, you know, based on the situation. Uh, it can be different and we wanna make sure that the ALJs have a full range based on the facts and relevant information of each case to be able to um uh, you know, implement an appropriate uh fine amount. Um, and then the third and final one is something that we've just been seeking in all new rules and it already uh laws and rules that exist, which is to provide a warning um and or a cure period for all first-time violations of this law. You know, there's twenty-four thousand plus restaurants and bars, many of them sell tickets at various times to different events and they're not always scourge, you know, going through city websites to learn about new laws and regulations. So in the chance there's a violation, especially one because someone didn't even know this was a requirement, they should be provided a warning and or cure period um uh in the law. So those are my points. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Andrew.
Next will be Daniel Schwartz.
Thank you very much. My name is Daniel Schwartz and I'm testifying on behalf of the New York Civil Liberties Union. We thank the committee and council members for holding this hearing and for the opportunity to write testimony today. Facial recognition and other biometric surveillance tools enable and amplify the invasive tracking of who we are, where we go and who we meet. They're also highly flawed and racially biased. The widespread use of these technologies presents a clear danger to all New Yorker civil liberties and threatens to erode our fundamental rights to privacy, protest and equal treatment under the law. The widely reported deployment of facial recognition at Madison Square Garden to ban people from the stadium that had already purchased tickets illustrates the dangers from the growing surveillance industry and the urgent need for comprehensive privacy protections. In the absence of federal, state or local biometric privacy protections, private and government entities alike have been free to set their own rules for the use of biometric surveillance technologies. In recognition of these harms, the city council enacted Local Law Three of twenty twenty-one as a first step to respond to the spread and use of these surveillance technologies in businesses. Unfortunately, the law takes a rudimentary approach to biometric surveillance technology, merely requiring businesses to post signs advising that biometric data is being collected, but without requiring the provision of adequate information about the system or the policies guiding its use. The NYCLU has repeatedly testified on this issue during the committee hearing on October seventh, twenty nineteen, and the subsequent hearing by the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection on the proposed rules on August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We urge the council to establish the guardrails needed to protect against biometric surveillance technologies, which at a minimum require informed opt-in consent, clear limits on the use, access, sharing and retention and mandatory security standards, and explicitly ban the use of biometric surveillance in areas of severe power imbalance, such as when used by law enforcement, in housing, in employment and in other areas where our fundamental rights are at stake. A state bill, the Digital Fairness Act, Senate Bill Two Two Seven Seven, Assembly Bill Three Three Zero Eight, introduced by Assembly Member Cruz and Senator Kavanaugh, serves as model legislation for comprehensive privacy protections and would ensure our anti-discrimination laws and civil rights are not circumvented by digital means, prevents surreptitious surveillance and creates urgently needed biometric privacy protections akin to the Illinois Biometric Information Privacy Act, short B-B-A that we heard um mentioned in earlier testimonies. Enacted in two thousand eight, B-B-A stood the test of time, clearly illustrating that there's no substitute for individual informed opt-in consent. It continues to offer crucial biometric protections that uh far beyond the powerful example recently of UAI settlement that amongst several other restrictions prohibits the vendor from offering their invasive product to private entities. Nobody wants to live in a world where pervasive surveillance identifies them, tracks their movements and associations, and impacts which places they can visit, which services they can access, or how they exercise their free speech rights. We urge the council to take actions that meet these values and put an end to ever-expanding surveillance across the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We encourage you to please submit your testimony in writing. There was some technical difficulties for a couple of seconds. Our next panel will be a, an online panel. We'll begin with Leila Nashashibi, Ally Finn, and then followed by Jason Berger.
Hi there. Um, good morning. My name is Leila Nashashibi. Um, very grateful to be speaking to you all today. I'm speaking on behalf of Fight for the Future in support of policy to ban facial recognition to protect consumers and workers. Fight for the Future is a digital rights organization with over two-point-five million members nationwide, including over eighty-five thousand in New York City. Among other focuses, we are leaders in the fight uh to ban facial recognition. Uh, we're reeling from the news that the owner of iconic New York City venues, Madison Square Garden and Radio City Music Hall is using facial recognition to identify, harass and ban people from his venues. It's a disturbing example of what's possible when powerful, vengeful people get a hold of advanced surveillance technology tools and represents a watershed moment that should concern anyone who cares about the privacy and safety of workers and consumers and everyone else. Uh, at Fight for the Future, we believe facial recognition is much more like biological weapons than alcohol or tobacco. The severity and scale of harm that the technology can cause requires more than a regulatory framework. It requires a full-on ban. Uh, I'd like to speak a little bit to the impact of this tech on workers. It's an Orwellian tool that allows for constant surveillance of workers, which can result in unfair hiring and disciplinary actions, often disproportionately harming black and brown workers. Corporations are using facial recognition on workers already. Um, it's replacing traditional time cards and is being used to monitor workers' movements and productivity. Uber Eats drivers have been fired because the company's faulty facial recognition identification software requires them to submit selfies to confirm their identity when the technology isn't able to match the photos of the drivers. Drivers get booted off the system and are on, are unable to work and thus unable to pay bills. Amazon delivery drivers also have to agree to AI surveillance, including facial recognition, or lose their jobs. This is a violation of people's rights on so many levels. It's putting people in an impossible position, you know, giving up their most sensitive biometric data and their privacy uh or facing, you know, unemployment. We can also be sure the tech will be used to suppress worker efforts to organize and engage in collective action. For consumers, uh facial recognition is able to track people's every move. Uh, it's able to create a digital map of where people go, what they buy and who they interact with. Not only is that a huge invasion of people's privacy, but the data can also be used to manipulate consumers through personalized advertising, convincing them to buy products that they wouldn't otherwise buy. For example, with uh sale prices. Uh, the data can also be shared with other companies or law enforcement agencies. And because of the lack of laws protecting people from facial recognition, uh, there's generally no way for folks to, for people under the surveillance, for people to know if they are under the surveillance and no way to avoid it. I'll also note that many of these systems say they pick up on abnormal movements as they track people, which puts neurodivergent people and people with physical disabilities uh at sort of higher risk of being flagged and harassed by security guards. I'll also note that banks are using facial recognition to verify identities and, and could make judgments about who should or shouldn't get approved for a loan based on an algorithm that is totally secret and there's no oversight or opportunity to appeal. And stores are using facial recognition to scan people's faces and bar entry, in some cases, bar entry to anyone who gets matched, for example, uh to a mugshot database. And we know that because of the reality of overpolicing and the prison industrial complex, it targets black and brown communities. Black and brown people are severely overrepresented in those databases. So it's basically outright discrimination against people of color and it's, as of now, legal. And it's really easy to imagine additional ways that the tech can be used to, by business owners to target entire groups of people. Um, a lot of the threats to the general public have already been, been touched on. Um, I think that there was a previous comment regarding that the, the security and safety of this data, the fact that it's, it's uh more risky to have your social security number stolen while it, of course, it is, it's dangerous to have your social security number stolen. When it comes to biometric data, uh, that's data that cannot be changed like a social security number and sorry, was that the end of my time?
Yes. If you want, you can submit it, uh, written testimony.
Next is Ally Finn.
Hello, thank you Chair Velazquez and everyone in attendance. My name is Ally Finn. I'm a senior researcher and organizer with the Surveillance Resistance Lab, an NYC nonprofit organization that focuses on corporate and state surveillance systems as one of the greatest threats to democracy, racial equity, economic justice and migrant justice. Facial recognition technology, along with other biometric surveillance technologies, are a monumental threat to democracy and to people's rights and security, not only their privacy. We are here today to call on the council and the administration for not only regulation and notice, but prohibition on the use of biometric surveillance technologies by private entities, specifically in places of public accommodation like theaters, restaurants, hospitals, hotels, stores and public buildings, as well as strong limitation, again, if not outright prohibition on government use. Local Law Three is not enough. It falls far, far short of even informed consent and opt-in policies and even farther short from protections from permanent harm. The MSG case is an alarming example of the weaponization of biometric surveillance technology, which is growing in use by not only corporations, but also by government. Industry lobbyists, as we just heard, consistently spout increased accuracy numbers as a solution. This obscures that technologies, when accurate, are applied to identify and target people to protect corporate and government interests at the cost of people's liberties, rights and security. This is clear in the case of MSG where the company used facial recognition tech to deny multiple consumers holding valid tickets, entry to sporting events and performances simply because of who they work for. That can easily be transposed to other aspects of people's lives and identities. For a sense of the bigger picture, over the past several years alone, facial recognition systems in the United States have been used to criminalize people living in poverty, facilitate mass arrests and incarceration of ethnic and racial groups, surveil demonstrators exercising their First Amendment rights at protests and target immigrants for deportation. Companies like MSG Entertainment and the unnamed vendor providing their facial recognition systems have virtually no restrictions over how they treat facial scans and all the other data they collect, almost no required disclosures at the local, state and federal levels. As far as we know, they can keep the data indefinitely and we have no idea who has access to it, who it is shared with or sold to. Local Law Three unfortunately does not fix this. We cannot trust these companies to prioritize our rights over their profits and urgently need regulation and prohibition. I also wanna point out that identity verification is also a form of surveillance and for over twenty years, the industry has promoted invasive data collection and sharing underneath that banner, underneath that terminology of identity verification, claiming otherwise. Proponents of facial recognition tech and biometric surveillance argue that it keeps people safe, but time and time again, we instead see that these technologies and their use puts people at increased risk of violence and denial of basic rights and resources. The MSG case also shows how easy it is for companies and law enforcement to justify their use of invasive biometrics by claiming public safety concerns. For example, the liars, the lawyers denied entry to sports games and Rockettes performances, did not pose a threat and yet MSG used the same system supposedly implemented for consumer safety to identify and remove them. Uh, surveillance technology and algorithms, time and time again, we need to repeat, are not neutral. They will always reflect the biases and the use of people who make them and the systems that use them, and they require prohibition at the very least limitation. Advocates have already been working with city council members to draft bills, including many of us testifying today with the Ban the Scan campaign and others. We call on the city council to engage with advocates and community members who lives are deeply impacted by biometric surveillance technologies and past legisla- legisla- legislation, excuse me, restricting corporate and city agency use of biometric surveillance to protect New Yorkers from permanent harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Jason Berger.
Hi, good morning. Um, council chair Velazquez and council members, my name is Jason Berger. I'm speaking on behalf of the Coalition for Ticket Fairness. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and thank you coun- council member Brennan for arranging this hearing and attention to this issue. The Coalition for Ticket Fairness has been working with government bodies in New York and Washington for almost thirty years. We promote fan-friendly legislation and live entertainment ticketing in an ever-growing and complex marketplace. In my over thirty years in the issue, I've seen many changes and nothing draws from the basic concept of that people love that live entertainment and the ability to access it in a fair and fair, a fair fashion is core to success. The live entertainment ticket industry has grown into a very complex, non-consumer-friendly myriad of exclusive agreements between venues and ticketing giants like Ticketmaster, AXS and others. Outdating technology that creates issues with online distribution of these channels has led to customer dissatisfaction. Regarding item A, eight A, the fees on online uh ticket sales and in-person are a very important issue which we completely support. But there are also issues such as disclosure of availability, restrictions on purchasing tickets without fees, public awareness on when and how many tickets are available, and most importantly, how a sale is final and a fan has limited opportunity in some cases to sell or transfer their tickets. To the point of disclosing the fees, we believe all fees should be made available to consumers without having to enter personal information. These details are collected and used for marketing and other purposes and should not be required in the ticket uh price and fee disclosure page. Uh, for print or social media advertising, we believe it may be challenging to list all the prices as many events have dynamic pricing models and pricings change constantly. One thing that would be helpful, however, is providing consumers with a way to purchase tickets without fees at box offices, which are sometimes restricted from sales um on the day that the tickets are made available. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you and I invite any questions.
Thank you. Our next panel will also be a Zoom panel. We will be starting with Tom Farugia, then James Sullivan, last Habasco.
Hi, good morning, good afternoon. Hi, I'm, I'm, I know we're running late, so I'll move as quickly as I can. I'm Tom Farugia. I'm the Director of Governmental Affairs with the Broadway League. Uh, we are the trade association for the national theatrical industry. Uh, we have over 700 members nationwide with over 400 maintaining offices here in New York City. It's producers, general managers, theater owners, everyone who works together to bring Broadway to New York City and of course Broadway uh, around the world. So I just want to thank the committee for allowing us this opportunity to speak on what is obviously the the less controversial issue of uh, what you're dealing with this morning. And I'll jump right into my statement. I have submitted my full statement for you to review. I'll just jump into sort of the the main points. Um, and then of course I'm available for for any questions. So, given that the state legislature recently examined this issue in great detail in consultation with many of the stakeholders, including the Broadway League, drew revisions to the New York State Ticket Resale Law, which was signed into effect uh, for 2022 and does not expire until 2025. We strongly recommend that the council defer to state law at this time without introducing further changes and additional complexity to the disclosure requirements, tickets disclosure requirements. The League has always strongly supported transparency in ticket purchasing process to ensure that consumers are aware of the source, price and fees associated with their purchases. During last year's discussions, we advocated for state lawmakers to implement improved consumer protections, including enhanced market transparency for all tickets sold to live events. Under state law passed in 2018, online ticket resale sites were required to disclose in a clear and conspicuous manner the total price of the ticket and how much of that is made up in service fees before sale is completed. More recently, Governor Hochul signed into law several additional amendments. Uh, and as of Jan- affect, she signed that into law on June 30th, 2022, including a mandate that all ticket sellers provide the total cost displayed in the ticket listing prior to the ticket being selected for purchase. Accordingly, we would propose that the council allow ticket providers sufficient opportunity to comply with the new state mandates before evaluating whether additional regulation may be necessary. Intro eight introduces significant compliance challenges with respect to digital advertising, open-ended runs with varying prices, as is common with Broadway, uh, multiple distribution outlets, promotions and dynamic pricing. Implementing these changes while Broadway is still struggling to return to pre-pandemic levels uh, would be extremely challenging. We're grateful to the council for its continued effort to take an active, continued active interest in the health of the live entertainment industry. However, we maintain that the state satisfactorily addresses these concerns about consumer cost awareness and the changes made to the law in 2022 need time to play out before the city advances further alterations to the sale of tickets for live entertainment. Thank you for this opportunity and again, I'm available for any questions. Um, and I would like to add that if there is uh, discussion about moving this legislation forward, uh, we would like to be engaged in those conversations in order to address those uh, issues that I mentioned, particularly with respect to compliance with the way Broadway does business, which puts tickets on sale for six months or a year in advance. Uh, through, I mentioned multiple distribution outlets, various, even prices change uh, throughout the sale because of dynamic pricing based upon selling. It's a very different model than when you have a one or two or three night engagement. And we would like to make sure that the way we sell our tickets is uh, a part, a part of the conversation to ensure that we can comply with whatever version of this law ultimately gets passed. But again, our recommendation would be to give the state law some time uh, for us to implement it and see how it uh, affects buying habits before making any additional decisions about additional regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be James Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee for letting me participate in this important conversation about biometric technology. I am BioKey's Senior Vice President of Strategy and Compliance, as well as Chief Legal Officer. Uh, BioKey is a New Jersey-based provider of identity and access management solutions that leverage biometrics and we think a positive way. Uh, we use it to get rid of the scourge of passwords and to stop hackers from being able to take over people's accounts online. Put another way, we use biometrics to simplify how people are able to get to the workplace applications and be able to get in as if there was a doorman to let them in as opposed to having to find or remember some way of proving who you are. We also allow consumers to secure their digital identity so that only them and not others who even are family members, who might know all of their out-of-wall and ID verification questions, cannot access and take over their identity without their consent. I've worked in the biometrics industry and technologies for over 20 years and I'm an attorney, member of the Georgia Bar Privacy and Technology Section and was a contributing member of the Sedona Conference's Biometric Privacy Law Working Group, which aimed to help develop a model uniform template for biometric privacy laws nationwide. I am a techie lawyer with a computer science degree from Brown and I really believe in this technology. And that's why I'm here today to help shed some light and answer questions about how the technology can be positive, even helping with equity as opposed to its perception as being something used for nefarious purposes. BioKey is a member of the International Biometric Industry Association, which is an industry group of responsible biometric technology vendors. They do exist. We don't develop surveillance technology or facial technology. We develop fingerprint authentication technology and we do include facial recognition software from a third party in our products with user consent in order to secure access to computer systems in a simplified way. What I hope to convey in the next few minutes is that this is a charged topic and there is really several things to take away from a careful analysis of it. First of all, biometric technology is very often misunderstood and as a result, it's subject to sometimes unwarranted demonization. It works in a mysterious way. You suddenly are identified without having to say or provide anything. NIST's biometric testing, as was alluded to by the gentleman from SIA, is a test that's open to all players who want to submit their algorithm. Therefore, out of the several hundred uh, algorithm submissions that have been tested, you're going to have both good algorithms and many that are not ready for prime time. Unfortunately, what we hear and even heard today is that the NIST report or a federal report found that most facial algorithms exhibited bias against people of color and other disadvantaged groups. Unfortunately, that isn't, or I should say fortunately, that isn't true of the majority of the quality algorithms that are in use by responsible people using this technology, whether it's government or in commercial settings. The next thing is to consider a balancing of interests between individual privacy rights, which are absolutely paramount, and the right to, as a business, know who you're dealing with and to not be subjected to the fact that somebody can essentially use anonymity to commit fraud or theft or other uh, really breaches of the business interests in this case. That was raised by several uh, of the speakers. If you must regulate, prohibit the wrongful conduct in the misuse or careless use of this technology. Prohibit the fact that it can't be used without adequate consent if it's going to be used in the way that we do or notice if it's being used in a method of surveillance and tailor your restrictions to the problems that arise from the use of the technology and not simply banning the technology itself. I can expand on these points and I will in my written testimony, but it's important to understand that biometrics are not vulnerable in the same way as passwords or credit cards or social security to disclosure. And this is something that unfortunately leads to a great deal of misinformation. Uh, people believe that if a biometric is disclosed, that you can't reset it and therefore you're stuck and you'll be subject to identity fraud for life. Biometrics does not base itself on security. It bases itself on integrity in order to make sure that you're actually measuring a real person and not going to be subject to somebody who has the information, the measurements, being able to inject them into an authentication or identification process and become you in a digital sense. That ability to have your biometric essentially tie things to you is a positive in the sense of protecting your assets, your 401K, your, your digital online assets and identity are protected by having a biometric associated with you. And the belief that somehow a biometric is like a password where if it's disclosed, you're uh, really just uh, ruined for your ability to protect your identity is, is a fallacy. I'm open to any questions and thank you and I'll submit this testimony in writing.
I certainly do have several questions, right? Um, in your experience, you have said that you have seen it work for the good. Now, in uh, New York City and various people who have testified today have shown uh, where businesses can take it another level and use it to their own detriment. Um, what do you see there and how can we protect folks, consumers?
Well, it's like many things in life that have positive applications and negative applications. And the answer is not to remove or throw the baby out with the bathwater, as they say, and say that you just can't use this technology. I believe that you can identify the misuses that can arise through the use of this technology. One of them being to select technology that does not exhibit the biases in the algorithm testing that NIST has conducted. Make it so that people have a duty to do due diligence and incorporate technologies that don't exhibit those racial biases that will create uh, bad outcomes. I think you can also legislate that data shouldn't be sold or that data shouldn't be used to discriminate in a way that you wouldn't allow discrimination if somebody had the personal knowledge of the individual. So for example, if you want to legislate that somebody uh, cannot prohibit someone from entering a facility, then do it based on whether they're using a biometric to do it or whether they personally recognize or have a handbook of watch out for these people. Those are the kinds of conduct-based uh, regulations that I believe you can apply to biometrics that makes it so that the technology can be used for good and that where somebody wants to apply it in a way that has an overall malicious intent or bad outcomes, that you can regulate narrowly in order to be able to control that. And, and that's really the ultimate goal of government is to provide narrow enough regulations that it doesn't overreach and start to, you know, essentially prevent people from being able to get the benefits of this technology. Leading among them is the consumers that really benefit from having the ability to secure their own identity.
Perfect, thank you. I have Councilmember Burrow here who may have some questions for you, okay?
Thank you very much. I apologize. I was at another hearing. I'm so sorry. So it's my experience that with those who live in apartment buildings, um, I have had tremendous complaints when the owner wanted to use um, facial recognition. And I have been able to, with attorneys, get rid of that opportunity to open the building. Um, these are primarily uh, low-income tenants. These are primarily privately owned. These are primarily uh, rent stabilized and rent controlled. And lots of families and children and guests and grandparents and three generations living in these buildings. So it was complicated to start with in terms of usage. It was complicated because people feel that they're being watched. It was complicated because often these are primarily families of color and they felt that the recognition wasn't appropriate. So there were no, there were no end to the questions. So my question to you is, is this a common complaint? Is this something that can be addressed? I must admit, it certainly didn't make sense for me to be using it at the, at these buildings. I have three buildings that had to get attorneys in all cases and we were able to squash this type of technology. So I wanted to get your opinion on that.
Well, I, I think anytime you're applying a technology that is, i- if it exhibits a disparate outcome, then you want to question whether or not it's a fair application of really any technology. If, if, for example, if you hired a, a security guard who had a personal bias and they just tended to stop a certain group more often, then you would have issues with the conduct of that security guard. Ultimately, biometrics is really trying to replace the process that people have done for centuries. They, they look at a photo ID, they look at you and they determine that it's a positive match or not. And unfortunately, a lot of those human manual interactions wind up having uh, a bias or an outcome that is disparate across groups. In, in a proper application of biometric technology where there is not a bias in the underlying algorithm, then you actually get better equity because ultimately there should be no distinction between how one group is is perceived and processed to be able to be admitted or not versus another. And, you know, again, a biometric technology should be evaluated based on its performance in those ways as opposed to simply saying that because there are some, I'll call them bad apples, but really more, more likely research projects that are in the NIST test results that really weren't properly prepared to, to do that sort of demographic performance. Those products are now being used to paint the quality products that are out there that do not exhibit these characteristics. So I think there's a separate question of whether or not people are comfortable with the idea that you have to use something like this in order to get into your building. And we, as an industry association, the idea A always recommends that you give people the option of being able to opt out in a, in a meaningful way so that they can choose to say, no, I'd rather just have a card than use a card to get in. But for those that benefit, just like EZ Pass, right? EZ Pass brought the ability to just drive through a toll booth. A lot of people were concerned that there was privacy implication, the government could track you. Ultimately, people should have the individual choice to be able to say whether or not they, they want to leverage technology like this and be able to, to then get the access and the ease of, of use that it does bring while others can choose to not do it and do it, you know, an alternative way and, and method.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next we will have Habasco.
My name is Habaia Piso. And excuse my English, I speak French, but I'm gonna try my best.
While we wait to see if they're able to rejoin, I'm going to call an in-person panel, Atiya Latif.
Good morning and thank you for having me here today. My name is Atiya and I'm a staff organizer at Amnesty International USA. I run our New York-based Ban the Scan Task Force and I'm here to speak about facial recognition technology. The only adequate facial recognition policy is a ban. While the city has moved towards disclosure requirements for businesses, these are meaningless without clear opt-in procedures for individuals to give consent for the extraction of their biometrics. Without this, New Yorkers risk being subjected to mass surveillance. The NYPD and businesses surveillance machineries across the city disproportionately threaten the rights of New Yorkers of color. The expansive reach of facial recognition technology leaves entire neighborhoods and protest sites across the city exposed to mass surveillance while also supercharging existing racial discrimination. From our research, we have found 25,500 public and private cameras across the city. Cross-reference with the NYPD's own Stop and Freeze data, we found that New Yorkers living in areas at greater risk of being stopped are also more likely to be exposed to facial recognition technology. This is predominantly black and brown people. Even in their homes, namely in the Bronx, Queens and Brooklyn, communities of color face greater threats to privacy. We and our friends in the Ban the Scan Coalition have said this before. Even when it works, facial recognition technology exacerbates discriminatory policing and prevents the free and safe exercise of the right to protest through the chilling effect. That it is by design a technology of mass surveillance and antithetical to human rights as we've already seen in cases of black and brown New Yorkers against whom we suspect FR has been used. That is why Amnesty is asking you, distinguished council members, to advocate for New Yorkers, New Yorkers of color, your neighbors and constituents, by working towards a comprehensive ban on the deployment of facial recognition in the city as the ultimate goal. The discussion about Madison Square Garden is just the first stop in a much longer conversation. We cannot wait till individuals are wrongfully arrested. We cannot wait till individuals are wrongfully arrested, unduly surveilled en masse, virtually lined up and used as experimental sites for potentially racist, invasive, and violent technologies. Meaningful regulation and accountability cannot be replaced with modest transparency policies. Thank you.
Thank you. This is to confirm that we are not able to have Habasco rejoin us on Zoom before the conclusion of this hearing.